Order and we'll start with a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the unity of justice for all.
Roll please.
Commissioner McFarland. Commissioner Kurie Ozzy.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner Mulder.
Here.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Scabdal.
Here.
Okay, we do only have four items on the agenda this evening, but I expect some of them are going to take some time. So when we do get to public hearings, I will be limiting applicants to 10 minutes and speakers to three so that we can get through everything this evening. And then as far as agenda modifications, Director Ford, I was going to ask if, and fellow commissioners, if we could take item three, Cooks Valley, the special events, the annual monitoring report, up before item two, which is Take Three Presents, just so that we can go through the monitoring before, uh, report before we take up a new event. Is everybody okay with that?
That makes sense to me.
Makes sense.
Okay. Are there any other modifications, Director Ford?
There are no other modifications to the agenda. You do have on the dais in front of you some items for F1, Farming Humboldt Dreams, for the item that you just mentioned, which is the monitoring port, also for Take Three Presents, the conditional use permit, and then also some comments on the vehicle miles traveled policy that were, that's being presented tonight.
Yeah, and those are, were all sent to us in advance of the meeting, so thank you.
That is correct, yep.
Okay, at this point, we will take public comment on non-agenda items. So anything that you would like to address the commission on that's within our purview, that's not on tonight's agenda, now's the time to do so. Those in the room, if you want to speak, please approach the podium. If you're on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone to, that will raise your hand and we will be able to call upon you. So I'm just checking, I don't see anybody in the room approaching the podium. And I do not see any hands raised from the online members. So I will close public comment on non-agenda items. We'll move to the consent agenda. We have one item on consent. I will pull the commission, the members in the room, and those on Zoom to see if anybody has any questions or comments on this items. If you do, we'll pull it from consent and, and take it up later in the meeting. Consent item one is Matthew Puckett, conditional use permit modification in the Bridgeville area. Commissioners? See nothing. Anybody in the room? I don't see any hands in the room. And I do not see any hands online. So consent item one will remain on consent, and that's our only item this evening on consent.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Commissioner West.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Levy. We'll just take this up with a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda passed. So we'll move to public hearings. First item is Farming Humboldt Dreams micro business special permit. And Director Ford, do we have staff report?
Yes, we did. Yes, we do. Ready to go?
I'm ready. Can you hear me?
Whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Not really. Can you, is your mic?
Should be on. Can you hear me now?
A little better, maybe move it a little closer.
There we go.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Derek Wiles, and I'll be presenting the Farming Humboldt Dreams micro business special permit. The project is located in Garberville, Garberville area and takes access via Alderpoint Road, which is a county-maintained road. The roughly 39-acre legal parcel is zoned agriculture-exclusive with a one-acre minimum special building site, combining zone and a general plan designation of residential agriculture. We are focused on the 2,000-square-foot building in the center of the site plan. Micro business will include, the project is to conduct ancillary operations in the form of a micro business that will include non-volatile manufacturing, distribution, and a nursery in an existing commercially permitted structure. Cannabis extracts shall be produced with solventless, non-flammable methods. Systems shall include presses and trimmers. Water is sourced from rainwater catchment. The proposed project will increase the annual water usage by 168,000 gallons of water per year. Currently, there's 305 gallons of existing water storage with one water tank equipped with a UV disinfection system and filter. Electricity is sourced from PG&E. Deliveries of clones will be made by the applicant within the local vicinity. Upwards of, upwards of five round trips per day and 25 round trips per week. Lastly, this application will include the use of Upper Sawmill Road as an additional access point. Some of, some of the public comments that we got include grading and developmental activities that have occurred under the original entitlement. Additionally, visibility of activities from Alderpoint Road and construction, construction activities which began without first obtaining a building permit and unpermitted grading that occurred on Sawmill Road. Proposed condition of approval, prior to operation, prior to operation, applicant shall pave the apron where it connects Upper Sawmill Road to Alderpoint Road to an extent of 20 feet wide by 50 feet length. We are recommending, recommending that the planning commission consider the mitigated negative declaration adopted for the CCLUO and the addendum per sequel guidelines, make the required finding for approval per section of Humboldt County Code, and adopt the resolution approving Farming Humboldt Dreams micro business special permit, subject to the conditions of approval.
If I could, real quick, I just want to add that this condition of approval that Derek mentioned is something that's not in the staff report, so that's something that we're recommending that you add in addition to the conditions of approval that are drafted in the staff report.
Commissioners, at this time, do you have any questions of staff? Yes. Commissioner Kurie Ozzy.
Thank you. Was there also public comment regarding use of the PG&E access road? And was that addressed?
That has been addressed. That's with the Upper Sawmill Road. The Upper Sawmill Road is right around the same vicinity of the PG&E access road.
So it's, it's the same road, basically?
Yes.
Could you answer, in the comments, someone wanted to know about these, being able to go in and make their own road, or they want to know who's required to comply, to make them comply with their application? Is it the county or the responsibility of the neighborhood? Can you answer that question?
That will be the county, and that will be addressed during their yearly annual inspection.
I think the, the concern was that maybe they get a fine, but then they just keep doing it, you know, using roads that they're not supposed to, or how does the county address that?
I think if I could, part of the thing that's happening here is that they are, have been using a road that's not the approved access. So this approval will address that. And it is a discussion that we've been having for some time in terms of getting this included within a modification and bringing this forward.
So the road that they want to add, the Sawmill one, is a private road that's maintained by the residents? Is that the case?
We're, yes, and we're requiring that they join the road maintenance association, that they take responsibility for maintaining the road.
And what if the community doesn't want them to join the association? Is that an option?
I think he's got an easement for that, to access it on that road. I don't think they can preclude that.
I also have a question. You mentioned the increased water use and the total water storage, but could you go back and elaborate how much water was associated with the original permit? What's the source of the water? And so what's the total volume of water that will be utilized on the project versus storage?
So while we are looking up the previously approved water use, we'll note that it is all rainwater catchment. So what they have is the greenhouses are, gutter connected to a substantial amount of water storage on the property.
Okay, we can come back. You can answer my question after we take public comment. And at this point, I'll open public comment, and I'll ask the applicant if they'd like to address the commission. If so, please approach the podium or raise your hand if you're online. And you have 10 minutes.
Hello, my name's David Morris and the owner of Farming Humboldt Dreams. And thank you guys for considering and having me here today. And I'm very grateful and excited. I moved to California five years ago and to pursue my dream of being a cultivator and ultimately to be vertically integrated. I think this is the next step of that vertical integration, to be able to do, I have, by the way, a degree in accounting. I used to be a fraud investigator, put people in jail for embezzling money. I have over 30 felony arrests in my career. I then owned a mortgage company and had 60 employees, largest FHA mortgage brokerage in Georgia for 10 years. Closed over 6,000 mortgages, FHA primarily. So I'm not a farmer. I am more a businessman. And, and I want to bring medicine and organic, and I'm doing, everything I do is organic. We do living soil. We have worms all in our soil and mushrooms pop up right next to the marijuana plants. And, you know, and we're doing 100% rainwater catchment. I've done something that I haven't seen anybody else do. We, we have gutters at the bottom of our greenhouses that go underground and go down, and they all attach, all, all four greenhouses attach and go to a 5,000-gallon water tank that we then pump up to our other tanks that we have under A-frame structures. We custom-built by permit and have 35, 31 water tanks, 5,000-gallon water tanks underneath these A-frame structures that we have gutters that collect the rainwater. So by February, by, by the end of December, we have 155,000 gallons of water already full. We then pump those to other tanks that are up the hill, draining the ones underneath the A-frame, filling up the other ones that are rainwater catchment tanks, quarter mile up the road. And, and then by the end of February, we have another 150,000 gallons. So we have 100, 305,000 gallons of rainwater caught and captured, you know, and, and all from these A-frame structures and from our greenhouses. So we're not like, you know, throwing out big black mats on the, that's unsightly, you know. Anyways, I, everything that we're doing for this business would be inside this 2,000-square-foot building. And we, I don't expect us to have eight visitors. I want to help our neighbors, our direct neighbors. I'm not looking to be a big distro. I'm looking to be able to package my own packaging for, I have three farms. I'd like to be able to bring those three farms there. I'd like to be able to package my stuff and sell my product, you know, whether it's eighth quarter, manufacturing. I want to do fresh, you know, press, you know, what's it called? I don't want to do a, just with water. I'm just using water and bubble hash and a rosin press, you know, which is no chemical agents. We're not using CO2 or, you know, volatile compounds. Nursery, I want to, I want to be able to grow moms and clones and teenagers and be able to supply them to my farms primarily. You know, I have three farms. And I bought the Alderpoint store. I realized I can, over my head, I, I'm, is like not in, so I put the Alderpoint store up for sale. But I do want to be in Humboldt the rest of my life. I absolutely love it here. I have a nonprofit with my fiancee Cynthia Robach and So Hum Services. And we are, we like to say we're fiscally conservative, socially liberal. We want to help the homeless, get back to their families, or get them in drug rehab. We go to the Redway Baptist Church every Sunday, and I'm very active, we are both active, in their food pantry, restocking the pantry every week. We go to St. Vincent's once a week, every week, sometimes twice a week, picking up food, getting food down to Southern Humboldt to feed families in need. So I'm also a member of the, not the Kiwanis Club, but the...
Rotary.
Rotary Club, thank you, yes. And, yeah, I'm a little nervous. I've never done this before. But I am very grateful and very humble, and, and if I upset my neighbors in any way, I always want to address them with compassion and kindness and, and address any and all issues. You know, we are very aware of fire safety, you know, constantly weed eating, limbing up limbs. I have the Kai, Kaya, the fireman, who is, he's coming to our, our land next week to say, to walk the land with me, to see what I can do to help fire, fire, you know, the tanks. We have, we have 13,000 gallons dedicated to fire, and we're only required 3,000 gallons. We've gone way overboard to make sure that we, you know, that, what is there. Anyways, I think I'm, I'm good. Do you all have any questions?
Not at this time. We'll give you a few minutes at the end after public comment.
Thank you.
If somebody asks a question or you need to respond to something.
David Nicoletti is our civil engineer, and I think he should be on Zoom. And if he, I would like him to...
He is on Zoom. If he wants to speak, he can raise his hand.
Have you reached out to your neighbors about their concerns about road usage?
Yes, I have. And if we're at the bus stop, there are constantly people meeting up there, drinking beer or showing pounds of pot. And, and I'm always telling neighbors, guys, you can't do this here. This is, there's a school bus stop here. This is an inappropriate place to do this. I, I am, I am constantly picking up garbage and beer cans that are left in the school bus stop pickup. So I'm a steward of the land.
But they're not people that are associated with your...
No, absolutely not. As, as a matter of fact, we did have 42 pallets of soil dropped a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago now, at Upper Sawmill and Alderpoint Road. And, and we had a bobcat lifting them off and moving them, and, and we had them loaded into trucks and moving to three different farms. And that did take, you know, it was two different days, and it did take, you know, a couple of hours. But I don't have any workers ever park down by the bus stop. I read the letter from Dan Thomas, my neighbor, and that wasn't anything to do with us. We don't, I don't have, I will never have anybody parking down across from the bus stop. And regarding the access road, the PG&E access road, David Nicoletti had put it in the report, and he thought that doing an onsite change was sufficient. And John Ford pointed out to David, no, that's not sufficient, David. They, you know, they talked back and forth. And immediately, we said, okay, well, let's solve this, you know, I'll pay and get a permit for that PG&E access road. So we immediately, David Nicoletti, my civil engineer, did the proper paperwork, submitted it. And, you know, something that he thought was approved, that wasn't approved, is an honest mistake. But we did get it approved, and we did pay for that PG&E road to be an access road. The other road that we paved, that has a, it's on Alderpoint Road, and it goes around a big curve, a sharp curve. And several times, I've had an almost near collision turning in there to punch in the code. And it's not safe going over the access road that we have. The PG&E access road is the absolute safest. You know, it's going to save, save a life using that road. If I need to get paved, I'll pave, I'll pay to pave it. You know, it's $9,000, you know, to put a 20 by 50 asphalt, you know. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I do see Mr. Nicoletti has his hand up, so if we can unmute him. Mr. Nicoletti, you have three minutes.
Okay, can, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the planning commission regarding this project. I'd like to talk a little bit more about the PG&E access road. So without getting into the, the history of that, basically, what we had to do with county is back permit the grading, which I did. And in discussion with utilizing that point of ingress egress rather than the ingress egress up, off the pavement on Alderpoint Road, I went ahead and took a look at site visibility based upon regulatory guidelines put out by an organization called Ashstone. And site visibility at that approach up on Alderpoint Road, the paved approach on Alderpoint Road, did not meet the criteria for the posted speed limit on, on Alderpoint Road. And David kind of alluded to it in layman's terms, that, you know, you could definitely almost have an accident with cars coming down that hill if you're turning right or left out of Farming Humboldt Dreams property on that approach. And I did, and I'm not sure exactly where this all ended up, but the county had a concern that that was identified as a primary access point and not the PG&E access point. It's been a while, but I believe I received direction, I may be wrong on this, but I received direction that we had to update the plot plan to show the updated primary point of ingress egress was at PG&E access road down off of Upper Sawmill. So I, I think I've got everything clear, clear in my mind. If I'm incorrect, please you guys correct me, but it seems to be the recollection of how that all played out with PG&E access road.
Thank you. If there's anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to the project, please approach the podium. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Cynthia Robach. Before I moved here, I was a licensed crisis counselor for court-involved youth, licensed in the state of Illinois and the state of Georgia. Before that, I worked in senior-level presidential analyst throughout Southeast Asia through two American presidential administrations. I just want to touch, first, we'll probably have more, know more than zero to two deliveries at the micro license a week. Another thing, we were talking about the fire safety. Kaya, last time Kaya was out doing the fire walk was two years ago. It's a constant thing. I was also a life science major. After a lot of stuff, I decided in my forties to go back and reinvent myself, and I became a licensed crisis counselor. And I also took a life science major. And I'm very compassionate about our soil. Kyle Flora has asked for my data set from iNaturalist because I reintroduced a lot of the endangered plant species back into our land. I have patches of trillium that are as big as this room in five years. I mean, we care about our land. Our Class III streams, I go in there and I hand-pull every rainy season, any of the invasives, the native ferns. You can see stuff just starting to really blossom. And a lot of it, if you look at it historically, was destroyed because of all the ranching, because it, like, ate all the natural, the animals, like the natural pine. So we're just taking care of that. I just wanted to add that. And another thing about our rainwater catchment, even when it's not raining, the moisture on our greenhouse is dropping down into the gutters. You can hear the water going into our tanks. It's quite phenomenal. If you read UN reports on the last big climate report they gave, it says the only way a small farmer is going to be able to exist into the future is through rainwater catchment because it gives you permanent access. On the driest of days, you can hang a clothesliner up, and you can get water to drip and collect water from dry air. And also, it's a historical mudslide up there at Windy Gap in Garberville. We've had no mudslides, even with that four or five feet of snow and rain that we get, because the water falls into there. When our tanks are full, we put that water back into that Class III stream. And we're not estimating how much we're doing, but it's definitely clean water because when you get all the water in that little bit of time, the ground becomes saturated, and so it just rolls off, and that's where you get the mudslides. This way, we collect it, and we put it back into it instead of just, you know, creating havoc from rocks and mudslides. And I don't know. I love it in this county. I feel like I've gone to heaven on earth. I've lived all over the world, and you all are really doing it well here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else in the audience like to address the commission on this topic? And online, star nine to raise your hand, if anybody online. I see caller 7108. Are they unmuted? Caller 7108.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. First of all, I'm thankful that this is before the planning commission because when the original permit was given, there was no public notification. There was no opportunity for the neighbors or anybody to comment. The original site plan had many inaccuracies. The plants, if they weren't going to grow on areas 15% or greater, then they terraced off, too terrace graded. they terraced off, too terrace graded. I could see the grading for miles and miles away. Anyway, also I thought it said something about security will be provided by locked gates and a security camera. The gate on Alderpoint Road is always locked. The gate coming off of Upper Sawmill is always open. I've seen it closed maybe twice. So the security, you know, is not happening with that. Yeah, so basically, oh, and he has three farms and he's going to be bringing marijuana from those other farms to this parcel to be processed. I wasn't totally clear about that. So, yeah. And I also didn't see on the site plan where the road off of Sawmill goes to the processing building and stuff. I didn't see that on the site plan. Maybe I missed it, but anyway, so if the plan is they're going to have the gates closed and locked, then I think that needs to happen because it certainly has not been happening. So thanks for taking my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, I see you have your hand up. You're unmuted.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
Thank you for, thank you for this opportunity. A little background, I'm Dan Thomas, I'm a registered civil engineer. I've lived here at this location on Sawmill Road for over forty years. I'm a second generation here, we've been here for many years. My father was a past agriculture commissioner in Silverweights and Measures. I've got family in the Eureka and Fortuna areas. I wanted to talk about the access. Living in Garberville is, I'm sorry, digress a minute, living in Garberville is really expensive. Gas is more, food's more, wear and tear, the roads are terrible, so wear and tear on our cars and our tires is more. But the reason we live here is because we're remote and we're not on top of our neighbors and we like that space. And this access that has come in on the PG access road, we didn't get any public notice that that was going to happen. That wasn't in the original plans. And this, the toolbox solution of a paved apron, twenty by fifty paved apron, that is not going to solve the dust problem, not at all. I mean, if you look at Google Earth and look at where there, there's already a paved apron off of AP Road from a previous pot farm. Putting a paved apron down there that's fifty feet long is not going to help with the dust at all. The current access, which was what was shown on the plans, I agree, that's a tight turn. There's a line of sight isn't all that good. But if you go up just a little bit further up the road, the existing initial driveway that used to go back to the little cabin that was back there, that's on a piece of tangent road there. I would like to have Mr. Nicoletti look at site distances at that location. Spend your money there, put your gate there, put your pavement there and get off of Sawmill Road and stop dusting us out. Did the commission get my letter about, I had three, three items?
Yes.
It says water and additional multiple residences?
Yes, we have a copy of your letter.
All right. Well, David is very proud of his catchment system and that's, that's great. But I gave you an example of how much water he's pumping. He doesn't have that, he's supposed to be pumping domestic water from our spring, a shared spring. And he doesn't have enough domestic catchment or domestic tanks to hold the volume of water that he's pumping. So I'm wondering where all that water's going. That's about all I've got. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, do we have anybody else from the public that would like to address this project with the commission? Yes, sir?
Good evening, commission. I'm Shannon Tally Faro, I'm the owner and operator of Green Ox Distribution right down the street from here. And I'm also one of David's neighbors with one of my farms, Spruce Grove, that's located just off Bell Springs Road, just up Alderpoint Road from Gentlemen's Farm. And I've got to say that I see a lot of farms as I go out in our routes for Green Ox picking up product from other cultivators throughout the county and other counties. And what he's put together for his tank farm is extraordinary. I haven't seen anybody else put up quite the structure he has and I haven't seen anybody put up quite so many water tanks. And I just want to really commend David and his partner for their efforts in, in saving, you know, as much rainwater as possible through utilizing their crops in the summertime. So just want to say it looks really nice when I drive by. He runs a really clean operation and in my opinion, I, I would favor passing his project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If anybody else would like to speak, please approach the podium. If not, Mr. Morris, either you or Mr. Nicoletti have an opportunity to respond to some of the questions that were raised. You have three minutes, it's time.
Hey, David Morris here. I would like to respond to Dan Thomas. We do have nine 5,000 gallon water tanks that are dedicated to our domestic use. Our spring, we have a meter on that domestic spring and we pump forty-five thousand gallons, fill up those nine tanks and they are separate from the three hundred and five thousand gallons. And they're right next to our house. You can't see them from the road, so Dan Thomas doesn't know, but I'm letting him know now. We have, we, and we use maybe ten thousand gallons a month of our domestic use. So rarely are we pumping water up from the spring to our tanks. We usually let it run down and then well, pump twenty or thirty thousand gallons at one time. So we're rarely using that. We also have twenty-two cameras in our, on our property. So we are super vigilant and, and aware that because we're right on the road, that there, you know, the propensity for theft is there. And, you know, so we're cautious. Was there somebody else?
We have sixty-three, sixty-three fruit trees that we planted. We also have ten vegetable gardens on our private, on our homeland that are twenty feet by four feet.
I, I see Mr. Nicoletti also wants to respond, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nicoletti, you're unmuted, maybe? Now you're unmuted.
All right, thank you, thank you. Yes, regarding, regarding the concerns that Mr. Thomas brought up, I'm looking up the hill, so I don't know if any of the planning commission knows this location very well, but any, so there used to be an old access point that was closed, okay? It was closed because that was also an unsafe ingress egress point. So on the east side of Alderpoint Road going up the hill, the site visibility triangles extend for quite a ways in which site visibility is not maintained, almost up to the end of its property, okay? That said, regarding the water usage, I do the water reporting for David as well with the Water Board and CDSW. And I can tell you based upon the meter he uses, David has given me, okay, he's not really using that much water down at the, at his residence, down at his residence. I can't remember the exact numbers, but it was like, you know, he was using about eighty gallons a day.
Thank you. Mr. Morris also addressed that. That, that really concludes your time. Thank you for your comments and I'll bring this back to the commissioners if we have any questions of staff. Yes?
To staff, I had just heard at the beginning of this, the statement that there is one hundred percent rainwater catchment. So is that still staff's understanding that, that all of the agriculture under this permit is all rainwater?
Correct, that, that is our understanding. And so I'll take that opportunity to also respond to Chair Scavdahl's question about the water. The existing operation, which is ten thousand square feet, was permitted and anticipated to be using one hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons per year. They have three hundred and five thousand gallons of water storage on the property. So the proposal, their plans are identifying that if they ran the micro business basically all year round, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that would add one hundred and sixty-eight thousand gallons, which is just below the three hundred and five thousand total water storage that they have.
Thank you. Could you also help us with the timeline of events? So when, when did the commission approve the original farming project? When was the access to Sawmill Road constructed? When was this barn facility constructed? And, and then when was this permit applied for, I suppose?
Sure. Okay, so I'm going to have to give you some approximate times without digging into the details, but the original cultivation permit was a zoning clearance certificate, so that is something that is essentially permitted by right as long as they meet the, the county code. There's no public notice that is involved in a zoning clearance certificate. That was approved in twenty twenty-one. That included the approval of this building that they're now proposing the micro business for. That, they had applied for a building permit for that building and unfortunately they did start before that was actually issued. I think they started when it was approved but not issued, which means they did start before they had a permit. That permit has now been issued, it just hasn't received its final clearance. And so that's why there's a condition in this permit that we're recommending that they, you know, receive the final occupancy clearance before they, they start operating. The Sawmill Road access was constructed in twenty twenty-three. And that did happen without any permits. And so you heard from the engineer that he believes that that has all been resolved. They did receive after the fact the grading permits for that road. However, the, there has been no approval from the county for that road to be used as an alternate access for the operation. Now, that said, because this was a zoning clearance certificate originally, that could have been something that could also have been permitted at the administrative level at the planning department. Because it's associated now with a discretionary permit, which is a micro business, we've chosen to, to bring that forward as, as part of the, the total project in front of you. And this micro business, I believe, was applied for late last year. Is that correct? So I think that gives you in some general terms the timelines.
So is PG and E road and Sawmill Road the same?
Mostly. So the Sawmill Road, and we can bring up a graphic if you'd like, the PG and E, there's a PG and E easement on the subject property. And so that is the location of this new access. That access comes off of Sawmill Road just after Sawmill Road comes off of Alderpoint Road. So the PG and E access is on the property, but it does come, that, that road and the PG and E easement comes off of Sawmill Road.
But to be clear, had the Sawmill Road been included in the twenty twenty-one permit, I understand, could have been approved by zoning ordinance, but also the residents, the neighboring residents would have been notified at that time, they would not have been. Because it was zoning, they would, okay.
Correct.
All right, that's what I'm trying to understand is that issue.
It, it could have been approved at that time if that had been what they'd applied for and there would not have been any public notice.
Thank you. Commissioner Mulder?
Just to piggyback on that, what I heard staff say is, once this road was constructed, it could have been utilized as another access point through like possibly a minor deviation, but because staff heard the idea of the micro business, staff chose to bring this forward all at once.
Correct.
Okay, so technically, staff could have already approved the road, though.
I, I think that's fair to say, although it's a fundamental principle of, of the county and basically a requirement of CEQA that anytime you have any action that's associated with a different action, they should all proceed at the same time as one project, one, one review.
Okay. So back to access, I am a little concerned though because I heard an engineer testify earlier that technically the current approved route doesn't meet visibility standards. So I'm a little concerned and feel like that's a concern, so something to think about, I guess I would say.
I have one more thing. It seems like the concerns that I heard was of the dust coming up off the road probably during the summer months and is it just a dirt road, there's no rock on it or gravel or any kind of mitigation to prevent all that dust?
Gravel with lime. So, yeah, what I'm hearing is that there may be some gravel there. We haven't, I don't believe, gone and done an inspection yet for that.
Is there anything that they can do to mitigate that dust during summer?
There are some things that they could do. I mean, the road could be paved, I think if, if dust is a problem, just more gravel could work. They could use some sort of treatments like lignin oil or something like that to cut down on dust.
Yes. Mr. Karazi?
With the estimate of zero to five additional trips per day, do you have an estimate of how that compares to current traffic on that, on Sawmill Road?
Unfortunately, we do not.
Mr. Mulder?
So I guess we have community concern about the dust for the, from this access point. I'm looking at this picture, it's not colored, but I do appreciate, I'm, so I'm assuming it's going up this road that is creating the dust for the neighbors. The one thing I would believe is part of the water board reporting and water board requirements, there has to be some sort of treatment on that road, probably gravel, water bars, something to deal with the, the water there because that is the grade that's there. I haven't been up that road probably six months or something like that, driving by there, but I think through the water board requirements that something may need to happen to that road. But I'm, you know, without the engineer looking at it, I couldn't say one way or another, but I, I feel that it's an, it's an access point we can, we could approve tonight and just be on top of it as far as the monitoring with the water board reporting and that kind of stuff. Because zero to five trips, and I mean, you're talking, it's, if they're going to pave that apron right there, I don't know. That's kind of where I'm at.
So I, I'm still a bit concerned that we hadn't access road constructed without permits. Apparently it is now permitted, so I assume that means that it has appropriate drainage and erosion control and, and the building department has, has reviewed it and, and accepted the road. And then I believe he also said the barn, the building started construction without a permit, maybe they've been applied for, but it was actually started construction without permit. I'm getting to what assurances do we have or what conditions do we have in here to ensure that other things aren't going to occur on this? ensure that other things aren't gonna occur on this project site without permits?
That's a great question. I don't know that there's any 100% assurance that we can, you know, come up with. The, we do an annual inspection, we could certainly do another inspection, more inspections if needed. This site in particular is very visible. When you're coming up the hill leaving Garberville on Alderpoint Road, it's all of a sudden you come over the hill and it's right there. And so we do frequently get concerns from members of the public whenever they're seeing things happen on the property. That doesn't mean that everything that's been happening, that people are concerned about, are violations, but I think it's fair to say that if there were any future violations, we would certainly hear about it.
It would seem that site's relatively easy to get to, that we have other projects and things going on in the Garberville area, that perhaps periodically we could make a site visit, maybe even an unnoticed site visit, to check on the property, make sure that it's staying compliant with the current conditions, and there's nothing going on there that's not permitted.
I think that's something we could do. The property itself, most, almost all of the cultivation and everything else occurring on the property is visible from Alderpoint Road. So even just from the public road, we likely could, you know, do an inspection to see if anything unpermitted is happening. That's where his development would be.
It might give the neighborhood, you know, some degree of comfort.
I'd just like to add, the commission has in the past added conditions to projects to actually have additional inspections and to have the applicant agree to allow allowing unannounced inspections, which would allow us onto the property. Cliff's right, you can see it from the road. But, you know, just that ability to get on, make sure everything's in compliance without notice oftentimes gives that kind of security and accountability that you're talking about.
We've heard that it's a good business and it's a good businessman, so, you know, maybe people would be agreeable to that. Mr. Mulder?
So me personally, I'm a little, you know, residences, I'm not really a big fan of the no notice thing. The one part I was thinking about looking at the site plan, I don't know that there's much more room to develop on that. Like, from what I remember, it's like literally right on the knoll on Windy Gap there, and there's like steep off to the sides. I don't, I don't know if there's much more room to develop. And I would honestly be under the impression that the neighbors have been noticed, so if there's any type of development going on on site, that the county would know about it right away. And I feel confident that process would work. But I do hear everyone else's concerns, too. So I'm just, I just, I'm not supportive unless there's like, if there is, staff was giving presentations like, hey, there's multiple violations. I guess I'm gonna ask this question through the chair to staff, is this the only project in Humboldt County that has started forward without a building permit?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, building roads without a permit is a bit beyond for me, but.
Um, yeah, I, thank you. You know, I, we've certainly had projects come before us where there was a real history of violations, of not following project plans, of things of that nature, leading us as a county to have some question about the credibility of applicants. I don't feel that is the case here. So the idea of imposing additional inspections when it is in fact a highly visible property already and pretty much built out doesn't seem necessary to me. But that said, the issue that does still concern me a bit is the access road question, you know? I, like Commissioner Scavdall said, you know, I don't like that this road was sort of put in without permission, without notice, and now we're just, now it's been permitted after the fact, and now we're gonna change the project plan to make that the main access point. I do hear what the applicant and the agent have said about the safety of the original access point onto Alderpoint Road. However, you know, the neighbor, David Thomas, commented that the access to that road could be moved up perhaps just a little bit up the road to a point that might solve the visibility issue. I'm not totally sure that I understood that correctly, and I haven't actually taken a look at it myself recently. But I guess I'm just, you know, I'm just still looking for if there is any compromise here between his, between the landowner's need and right to have safe access to his property, and the concerns that have been raised about the impacts on neighbors from the use of the dirt road to Sawmill. I'm not really sure what that compromise would be, but I'm still sort of listening for it.
Go ahead.
Through the chair to staff, so I just want to double check the conditions, including the one that you recommended. This project, if approved as recommended, would have to have the apron installed and would have to get the final on the commercial building before any extra activity could happen. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And let's just say, community concerns, if those activities were being utilized before it was paved, i.e. technically, that access road along Upper Sawmill, if we do approve it, couldn't be used until the pavement happens, what would happen, what would be the repercussions or potential repercussions if those routes were being used and that building was being used?
The, well, everything could potentially lead to a potential revocation hearing. I do want to be really clear, though, that access off of Sawmill, I believe, has been used already. So that could be something that we condition to not be used any further until that, the apron is paved.
That's, through the chair, that's kind of how I read your presentation, that added condition, that's the way I read it, is if approved tonight as it is, that road could not be utilized until the pavement apron goes in place.
So one thing I should probably make clear is that that could be a condition that that road not be used for the, I mean, you could condition it to not be used for the existing cultivation. But everything right now, including the road apron, would need to be done, all those conditions before they operate the microbusiness.
Okay.
And that's the way that it's written in the staff report right now.
I just also want to note, it is possible to drive down a dirt road without raising dust. You just have to go slow enough, okay? And I think that was one of the concerns from the neighbors, is they don't feel that the people that are accessing the property are going slow enough. Now, whether or not they know which cars are which on the road and all of that, I don't know, I'm sure there's room for debate there, but I think what I'm hearing is, people are just asking for good neighbors, courtesy, drive slow, particularly if somebody has a little longer on the line, you know, let's not speed down the road. I live in a rural area.
Speed bump in the driveway.
Yeah, speed, yeah. I'm just saying, you know, it can be solved. I don't know if we need to condition it that way. My concern is, you know, when we approve a project, things go on on the project site, neighbors get upset, we don't have a lot of recourse here, right? A visit once a year by the county to check out the place isn't, we don't have a lot of recourse. And I don't know how to resolve that necessarily, but I don't want to see this project come back. I don't want to see more violations on this project site or things going on without a I think that does need at some point lead to permit revocation. And I don't know how to condition this project to get those things in there necessarily, other than to say, hey, maybe we should do an inspection every once in a while, or maybe more frequently, and that's where I was going with that, as something to try to even be able to communicate with the property owner from time to time, hey, we are getting some complaints about dust, or hey, this is happening, and just to let them know. So they can make efforts to be good neighbors. I don't know the answer to that, and I think we.
They were all good factual points, and I think that nobody's really wanting to go lean one way or another yet. That's kind of what I'm, I mean, those were some great advice, that drive slow, don't create dust, be mindful of the neighbors.
Chip seal the road.
That's another one.
That's something that perhaps the Road Association could take up. I don't know that that's something that we can.
Yeah. Well, and those type of concerns can be brought up at Road Association meetings, which happen annually usually.
Commissioner West, if I can, no? I know. Commissioner Curie-Azzi?
I was gonna go ahead and make a motion, if there's, I'd like to move to approve staff recommendations, including the recommendation to add a 20 by 50 apron, and to not include a recommendation for additional staff visits, if that is okay for Commissioner Scavdall.
You're making the motion. You don't need my permission.
I'll second that motion.
Just for clarification, with that motion, does that imply that that access point cannot be utilized from this point forward until it's paved, or can they use that in the interim for the cultivation activities?
It was per, how I heard it from Cliff, where it only applies to the microbusiness. My understanding is it would still be able to be used for the original permitted activities.
Okay.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner West, you have a second? Voice vote, please.
Commissioner Curie-Azzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner Scavdall?
No.
Motion carries five to one.
We'll take a break, we'll come back at 10 minutes after seven.
Mr. Scavdall, I just wanted to say that that road that we're talking about has been built since before.
I, what did I do?
Recording stopped.
Uh-oh.
Recording in progress.
Cooks Valley Special Events, the annual monitoring report for Mateel Community Center. Do I have a staff report?
Okay, thank you Commissioners Steve Lazar, I'm the planner assigned to this one. We're bringing two items to you tonight involving events in Cooks Valley. This first one is a monitoring report for the reggae on the river or the Mateel's use permit, which last year involved reggae on the river. If we can share my screen, I'm gonna walk through it now. So you can see here that the permit, we, for Mateel Community Center, involves a number of different parcels. We approved this, or the planning commission approved this during the 2023 as part of a joint effort where the Northern Knights group and the Mateel Community Center both came forward with requests for use permit modifications and renewals. These have always been term limited permits, and so this, the current term for these permits is from 2023 to 2027, so we're right in the middle of it right now. So just to kind of familiarize yourself or refamiliarize you with the area here, in red is the Benbow State Recreation Area, purple is Richardson Grove, and then yellow at the far right is the Cooks Valley area, both yellow and green, which we'll zoom in in a sec. But the yellow parcel is where the events that the Mateel have been operating have been occurring. So there, I've just highlighted it. And then looking closer, you know, they call it the County Line Ranch, formerly the Dimmock Ranch, because the Humboldt County, Mendocino County line runs through the property. They use both sides of that line in service of events, they being the Mateel. And it's also used in concert with the Northern Knights event that's operated by that group. And then you can see sort of auxiliary facilities that are approved under the use permit that include the Richardson Grove RV Park and the One Long House facility, and also the Frenchess Campsite on the western side of the South Fork Eel for parking, if needed. And it was used this year. So zooming a little closer, you can see the yellow is the area that's been largely used during events in recent years by the Mateel, and the green is the area that's used by Northern Knights as well as the Cooks Valley. And I'll speak to kind of these, the breakout of these, just to kind of put it in perspective, also because we have another permit coming forward tonight. You can see here that the Northern Knights permit, both permits allow for two different events to occur, but the permit that we're looking at tonight is the Summer Arts and Music Festival and Reggae on the River permitting, which is under one use permit that the Mateel holds. In recent years, they've done the Summer Arts and Music Festival, but never Reggae on the River until just this last August. And it's also been a dynamic thing, the permit allows for two events to occur, but there's never been two events in any given year since the approval was granted in 2023, and even before that. The Summer Arts and Music Festival was the only thing that had occurred under the Mateel's permit, and the Northern Knights event in recent years is the only thing that's occurred under the, under that permit. So looking a little closer, just to kind of explain the mechanics of camping, attendance, and vehicles, the Reggae on the River event is capped at 5,000 people if it's only going to be using the Cooks Valley site. In other words, going back to that earlier slide, the yellow area, they have to use the Bowman property to unlock additional attendance. And so for the event that occurred last year, 5,000 was the limit on attendance, and camping expands as well with the use of the Bowman property, but that was not available. And then the number of vehicles that can be parked is limited. So now, looking at the statistics of what happened last year, you can see the event, the permit for reggae allows for a three-day event, 4,500 people camping, a maximum of that, 5,000 people in attendance, and 2,500 vehicles. So looking at the details of the event, it was a three-day event, in keeping with the permit. It had roughly, this is an estimate, it's a little hard to pinpoint, but based on the ticket sales, they believe around 1,650 people camped on the site. And then in terms of attendance, you can see daily attendance numbers were right around 5,000 building in Saturday and Sunday. So they kept within those thresholds. And then even with those attendance numbers, they still struggled to find parking, but they were able to use auxiliary facilities to accommodate some of the additional parking demand. So that occurred on those parcels further north in the, in the area around Richardson Grove. So, you know, this is an aerial photo that was provided to us that shows kind of what the event looked like from the air last year. You can see it largely coincides with where it was anticipated there would be things, and I put a little side by side here just so you can kind of see. So on the left is the site plan that was approved as part of the use permit, showing areas dedicated to camping, parking, and musical performance areas, and you can see where the assemblage of vehicles and camping occurred. So want to get into water quality, because we did get some public comments regarding this, as well as a few other things, but I think those are largely addressed in the staff report. But speaking to the water quality question, it's important to note that the permit includes provisions for testing and sampling, and they're specific to taking tests upstream and downstream of the event, and making sure that it's done whenever there's a three or four day event, and having those tests, taking those samples to a lab to be tested. It was revealed as part of looking at what they provided to us, that they probably could have done a better job of picking further upstream and further downstream locations, though it is a little challenging. though it is a little challenging, because outside of the universe of the property ownership, it can be hard. But I think generally speaking, that was a room for improvement there, but that's where they're indicating those samples were taken. And then looking, sorry, then looking here, these are just examples of, of what the, the actual tests look like, provided to the lab, and, and they come back, you know, with the actual data that we were provided. So looking at that data a little closer, you can see that the, they tested all four days, both, all three days of the event, as well as the day following the event's completion. So test results that we were provided, you know, showed that things were within the, the guidelines for public health concerns. And when we're talking about the type of test being done here, it's, it's about bacteriological testing. In other words, if you were to ingest water or come into contact with it, would it make you sick as a result of exposure? And so there are different tests, but one is for total coliform, and one is for E. coli. And I want to take this opportunity to say, if you, if you have additional questions that are of a technical nature, we have Benjamin Doll from Environmental Health, who's, who's far more conversant with this. But I have met with Environmental Health in recent days to try to get my hand, my head wrapped around it. So, so you can see here that in terms of these, these, these guidelines, the test results were below those thresholds every day except for the first day of testing, Friday, and the test was taken at 9:30 in the morning. So it's really, what this I think reveals to some extent is that there, there can be spikes in these things totally unrelated to the event itself. It's a, it's a natural system, and anything can, can affect that. So, so I, I think, you know, I just want to point that out. So in terms of the testing that we received this year, and it's, you know, reviewed by Environmental Health, we, we were given some insight into, you know, some room for improvement, and some of the issues with the way the sampling occurred. In particular, you know, the, the way the sampling was done, it didn't identify a methodology, and the permit mitigate, this is a mitigation measure of the, originally the EIR, and now the, the mitigated negative declaration that was adopted in 2023, that required that you submit a plan to Environmental Health to review or waterboard to make sure that your methodology is correct, that outlines how you will execute this. That was never done. So really, Environmental Health is looking at this without knowing exactly how it was executed, and, and they have some concerns in that regard, and recommendations that you were provided as, I think, late yesterday. So there are some ways to, to improve it, in particular, developing a plan by a professional, implementing that plan correctly, and then the last part is the testing part. So the, the plan should dictate when the test results are provided. Six hours is kind of the recommended threat, keeping, getting it to the lab within six hours for the test. After that time, bacteria starts to die, and there's less of a representative sample. So, but I think it's important to point out is, there is not a lab that's, that's open in Humboldt County on the weekends. So there's a kind of fundamental issue there. So it creates a kind of a logistical concern. So we, we think there's a way to overcome that, and Environmental Health thinks that, you know, a trip to the Bay Area might not be unreasonable, given that we were trying to deal with this. And, and in speaking with the Mateel last night, it might not be impossible, because they have to bring artists up from the Bay Area during the event, so it could be a shared trip, you know, to, to tackle that. But there also could be some strategic testing, where we, you know, maybe do it on the Friday before, and the Monday following, and make sure to take a sample on a Sunday evening or something, so it's pretty fresh. So I think there's, there's ways that we can kind of get a better snapshot, but I think that was one of the issues that got raised. So, and this, this just points out, like, when you look at this, this sample here, this was a sample from August 3rd, but they didn't get it at the lab until the following Monday. And they made note on the seat that it was too late, so they can't make any, you know, guarantees on that. Want to point out that we did coordinate with a number of agencies in doing the monitoring report review, received a lot of positive feedback. It was, it was very good to hear from the fire agencies that they were pleased with the amount of fuels reduction and the resources that were on, on hand during the event. That's an important thing to, to tackle. And I, I think it's also important to point out that this is the first time the Mateels' operated event of this magnitude in recent years. So it, it, it was kind of an initial attempt here. So the recommendation tonight is, or was originally just to receive the annual report, but in light of the feedback we got from Environmental Health and recommendations that they provided, we believe that your acceptance of the report should also include directing the applicants to, and, and when I say that, I want to be clear, we have one environmental document that covers this site for events, and it has mitigation measures that govern anyone who uses the property in that capacity. So that includes the Mateel Community Center, the Northern Knights Group, as well as the folks that will be here tonight requesting a use permit. So the idea would be in implementing and, and addressing the mitigation that's already developed in the MND and the prior EIRs, that we refine it to incorporate the recommendations that have been recently made by Environmental Health, and then direct all applicants to conduct the water quality testing with Environmental Health's consent and oversight. So those refinements, we recommend the Planning Commission direct the applicants as part of accepting the report. And with that, I think that's the end of my first presentation. So I, you have a lot of items on the agenda, and I wanted to keep it pretty brief, but I'm certainly open to fielding any questions at this point.
Quick question, thank you, Mr. Lazar. But so on that recommendation, since this report pertains to the Mateel, and specifically to last year's reggae on the river, the recommendation that those, that the sampling, that the monitoring plan with different sampling protocols be a new requirement, that would apply to this event only, or to, are you suggesting that that similar type of condition should be added to the permit for other events as well?
It would govern all events at the site, because it's a mitigation measure of the programmatic document that, that is the basis for those events.
Yes.
Do they do any testing on off days before the festival, so they have something to compare with, to see, I mean, maybe there's?
They did in, in the case of this year, because they, they did on Monday, which was a day following the event, so there was no.
No, I'm talking about prior to, so that they know, maybe there was no impact, but they, they wouldn't know, maybe this is normal.
One of the recommendations for Environmental Health is to do that, so we have a better understanding of the background prior to events commencing. And, and another reason for that is that people bathing in the river would know ahead of time whether or not the river before the event even occurred is already has levels that are too high for safe.
Because it could already be a problem, and, you know, maybe not having to do it every single day and drive to the Bay Area or whatever, but something prior to, and maybe towards the end of, so that, you know, one day you had to drive down there would be sufficient, so you could say there wasn't a problem, and then maybe there was, or it wasn't one. I mean, I don't know.
Mr. Kurayazi?
Thank you. Through, through the chair, regard, I think there was also a comment regarding bullfrog mitigation and draining of the pond, and I noted it looked like it had taken them about two months to drain that pond. I was curious if you had looked more into that.
Yeah, so thank you. Through the chair, the, the bullfrog mitigation was started in September, it should have been started in August, that was a failure. And then also, it, it ran into issues from speaking with the applicant, it ran into issues with the, the mechanism, the, the hose or whatever, clogging, and it's in a fairly remote spot, so it's on the other side of the river from the County Line Ranch. So you really got to have someone there monitoring it to make sure that it doesn't plug up. And so they kept coming back and realizing it hadn't finished draining, and then restarting the siphoning and all that. Their solution they're proposing, and I think it's a good one, is to tackle it in the post-event environment. So if the event occurs in August, you know, it'd be three to four weeks before the, the deadline that's set under the permit, which is the beginning of September. And then that would have people on-site already as part of the event cleanup, and they'd be in a better position to monitor, to have more people power to throw at it.
I, I do have a couple of questions and related to the testing. First of all, it, it doesn't appear like we're actually using the right test for E. coli, because we're not, the test limit was well below 10,000. So maybe you can comment on that. And then the other thing, not only do the samples have to get to the lab within six hours, but I actually think it takes a while to run the test to get results. So I'm, not clear to me that we would actually have real, results during the event. Like, we might get samples taken, get into the lab, but the event might well be over before we actually get the lab results. And can you clarify that?
Sure, through the chair. So I think this is a great time to introduce Mr. Doll, who's here tonight, and is much more conversant with these types of matters.
Hello, everybody. I'm Benjamin Dolphin with the Humboldt County Division of Environmental Health, and the supervisor of the Consumer Protection Program. That includes primarily food, but also we manage the beach monitoring program, which relates directly to this topic. What was your question again?
Again, it seems like they need to be running different test protocol to get, the, the test limits that they use didn't even, just as greater than 2,500 or something. So how would you know if you exceeded 10,000?
Exactly. That was something we noticed, and it would be a dilution. They would just dilute that sample again to increase the resolution. The sample we run through our public health lab for our beach program does get up to that 10,000 MPN limit. And then you are correct that there's also, it takes 24 hours incubation period before results are available. So there is a delay, and you're not really getting real-time instantaneous levels of bacteria in the waters.
Okay, yeah, so we would have to get early sampling to see what's going on. Then one other question, you also, I think, are suggesting that we test for algae, which I think is also a good idea, particularly for the events that occur later in the summer. Is that something that would also be covered in the sampling plan, sampling and testing plan that would be approved by your department?
I don't want to necessarily speak for planning, but I know it's not in the current mitigation measure. So that was just us promoting our stance in public health protections.
Okay. Is that something that we could add?
Through the chair, yes, absolutely. You have a large amount of latitude in light of the way the EIR and MND are written.
Okay. And, well, we have the health officer here. Okay, any, any other questions for?
Thank you. Just because it, I believe it was your report that, or your comments on the report that, that called out the need to get samples to the lab within six hours. I take it that the, that the results received on weekdays are brought to your lab?
Um, to the public health lab.
To the public health lab?
Yeah, county public health. Or, excuse, I'm sorry. If you're speaking about the result, or the samples collected at reggae, those were taken to whatever North Coast Labs is called now.
Ah, okay. Yeah, no, I just, I just was, I just was wondering if you had any other thoughts about how those lab results could be received over the weekend here in Humboldt in a timely manner, because the idea of shipping them down to the Bay Area doesn't seem terribly practical.
It may take organizers to make special arrangements with a local laboratory. It was just our observation that the samples were, ran outside of their holding time.
Yeah. Okay. And perhaps now that you've put that issue on notice for them and for us, maybe it's possible that those arrangements could be made with a local lab.
We'd hope so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
It just occurred to me that I should probably disclose that I have attended the Summer Arts and Music Festival before, and I'm familiar with the site. I don't think it adds any additional insight that you guys don't have, besides the fact that I experienced from an attendee's standpoint, a very well-run event, and never saw any violations that would be of concern to me.
Thank you. Director Ford, this is a monitoring report. Do I take public comment on?
You should, yes.
Okay. Thought so, but I just wanted to confirm. So I would ask if anybody from the organization would like to address the Planning Commission? I see we have somebody on Zoom, did have, they just disappeared. Had a hand up. It's back. So I'll take, I have Mr. Hudson on Zoom, but is there somebody from Mateel Community Center that would like to address the commission?
And through the chair, Peter Hewson is part of the.
Oh, Hewson, thank you. He's part, okay. We'll take him next. Thank you.
Bring this all the way to the short people level. Hi. I'm, I'm Alicia Goodrich. I'm the festival manager for the event and the agent on the, on the project. Thank you for having us, as usual. We're committed to improving some of these shortfalls that we had this year as far as testing. The fellow who did our testing, Oliver, I believe might be on the Zoom, but he's been in contact with me as we've been receiving the comments, and is already ready to go to get a new plan over to Environmental Health and get this thing rolling. So any other, you know, issues that come up, we're always committed to, you know, improving our practices and caring for the community and the health of the river, and all these things are super important to us. So if you have any questions for me directly, happy to answer them.
Hi, thank you. I was curious if, if there were ticket price reductions offered for not bringing a car, or if it was an extra cost for parking?
Yeah, we do a, I love that song. We do a, a ticket price reduction for carpools. So yeah, I think it's like over three people in a vehicle constitutes a carpool. Other than that, we might do something fun for riding the shuttle, a little incentive, maybe a free drink ticket, something, something of that nature, but that's kind of where we're at.
Have you ever considered offering attendees from the Bay Area, say, a charter bus service or some other type of transportation?
Been brought up before, and we can certainly look at it. We did recently look at sort of our demographics of where, you know, our, our ticket holders are coming from, and, and the Bay Area is the largest outside of, of this immediate area. So it is something for us to look at and consider. I believe Northern Knights has tried this before, and so I'd be curious to talk to them and see how successful that was, and if it was worth the charter bus situation.
I, yeah, okay, thank you. You have a question?
Just following up, do you, do you charge separately for parking, or is parking just allowed for each ticket?
Parking is separate. It's $40 for the weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hudson, we can unmute you.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Greetings, members of the Planning Commission, the public. My name is Dr. Peter Hewson. I'm here representing Northern Knights as one of the founders, as well as Cooks Valley. We've been doing this for a little over a decade on our side, and it's been done many years before then. And as event promoters and landowners and purists in junction, our top priority has been health and safety of tourists, attendees, and the protection of the shared natural resources. The site has been under rigorous environmental monitoring for decades. We've continued to put significant time in and resources into our quality testing before, during, and after each event. For many years, the data's consistently shown natural variability and levels, sometimes higher upstream, sometimes downstream, fluctuating even within a single weekend. And the variability underscored the uncertainty at the complexity of natural ecosystem. Given the practical limitations that we've discussed tonight, we also do agree that, you know, making more concentrated efforts to focus on additional data collection efforts, especially like the day before and the day afterwards, making sure things are getting tested at consistent locations across events to capture the right and meaningful data, you know, asking, asking one of the local labs, whether Mendocino, Humboldt, or wherever, to say, hey, can you stay open a bit later on Friday, or open up a little bit earlier on Monday is a reasonable request. So we understand where the, where the comments are coming from. We want to continue, you know, this is a strong groups across the board, the group you're gonna hear after this, Mateel, ourselves, the landowners, like, everybody cares a lot right now, and it's a really, like, beautiful thing during this time to have this many parties all focusing on, on setting this and doing this right for potentially like the long run here, and, and continue to bring people up and do it responsibly is really the goal. So we hear the, what, what's being presented, understand we're doing a lot more than justice, but it continues to be really, really important to us, and, you know, appreciate everybody's continued support as well as, you know, concerns, and make sure we continue to do this right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the commission? Anybody from the public?
Yes.
Please approach the podium. Please approach podium.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Jesse Parsons and I'm one of the property owners that are right there at the Demick Ranch area. And I see that you've been flashing my property number up there on the boards. And I'm just, my biggest curiosity is, on the map that we just saw for the new, where are the emergency egress on there? And is that my property again and my easement that you plan to use? Or am I asking him that?
Yeah, we're not going to answer it. You can ask questions of us. We'll take it up later.
I'd like to know where the emergency egress is and if that's my easement you plan to use again.
Thank you, noted, noted.
And yeah, I was going to say, I was going to have Mr. Lazar here show me where that was because that's, seems to be his privy on information.
We'll, we'll take that up. We'll, we'll answer the question after the public speaker.
Okay, and I'm supposed to be insured and I did not see the insurance policy that covered my property last year. And that was part of the original contract a long time ago, agreement we had. So I'm just kind of wondering if they can keep running the event and not insure me and then use my easement without having made some deal with me to use my easement. And you can't, the county cannot say that they can use easement because easement comes from Caltrans, having nothing to do with the county. So you have no control over that. That has to do with my easement, Caltrans. And if I decide to let the people use it at the Demick Ranch to, or the ranch, to use it as their emergency egress, they need to make a deal with me. And I would like that to be part of the record. And you need to know what my property number is? Mine's the 09.
Say that again, please.
My property number is the one that ends in 09.
Thank you. If there are other speakers, you can line up behind the podium so we can keep moving this along. Thank you, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Susan George. I am the tenant since 2010 at the 09 property. And that's the 033271009. I think John Ford's familiar with me. I know Noah has seen me speak many times at this. I've had many phone calls with Steve Lazar. I am wondering, is it peculiar to you, after 10 years of this, that our property is void and also that there's no mention of us or any participation in the staff report? I'm saying that I have record that our property has been used. So I'm saying that this has been a falsified staff report. Also, I am very hesitant to approve any other events further because as you can see the amount of people coming to the driveway, I'm the only person in this room that lives and operates my business on that property. I'm, I've been negatively impacted, emotionally impacted, I've been bullied, Steve Lazar has been complacent, and actually I've cited many a bias from him towards County Line Ranch. And I'm just wondering, does it call any question to you guys that after 10 years that we're listed on the permit, but there's no record of our voice at all or any record of our property being utilized? Does that call any question to you? Does that seem peculiar? No answer?
Could you explain what your concerns?
So are, we're listed there and in the staff report, there has been no record of us.
We, we.
That we're being omitted from staff report, we're being silenced.
Please direct your comments to the commission. We'll answer, we'll, we'll take it up with staff.
I understand.
But this is your opportunity to.
I'm asking you, do you find it peculiar that we're being omitted from the staff report?
We're not going to take dialogue. We're going to listen to you.
That is a question. Do you find it peculiar?
I'm not going to answer the question right now until I have an opportunity to talk to staff. That's what I'm trying to explain to you.
Okay.
So I'll take the information in.
Okay.
And then we'll, after, after we get to public hearing, we'll, the commission will address staff.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So is there anything else you'd like to bring to our attention?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in support of any further events being approved. You can see that the, the number of attendees is already large. I've had record of negative impact to my businesses that I run there. The Mateel has been very difficult to communicate with, I have record of that. They literally told me that they will wash their hands of me, which I don't understand how they can do that when they're operating on a permit that contains my property. I mean, I have lots of minutes of our meetings and it's, it's bad. And I'm just, I hear you, you know, taking in consideration other people's roads and neighbor concerns. Why are we being silenced and omitted from the staff report? Thank you.
Thank you. Have any other public comments? I'll provide the Mateel group, if somebody would like to speak, you have three minutes to address any of the comments that have been made, if you'd like to, otherwise we'll bring it back to the commission. Okay?
Just to clarify, Chair, this is just the report part of it, so it's not actually events. This is just the report part we're doing. Okay.
On, yes.
And just, and just to clarify, just public comment, we don't dialogue. People give their testimony and staff can answer questions if they feel fit, if it's pertinent to the, the matter that we're talking about, which in this instance is just monitoring, correct?
We are monitoring, I think some of the questions are related to perhaps the monitoring and, and the event. So at this time, I'll ask Director Ford if we have any response to some of the comments that we've heard.
Yes, yes, would you?
So I, I think it's important to kind of frame things a little bit for the commission. When we were processing the use permits back in 2023, we explicitly made sure to work with Jesse Parsons, the gentleman who came up and Susan, who's the tenant. Other property owners in the vicinity like Bowman were included on the permit and I think that's a good illustration. So the Bowman property, the Mateel has chosen not to use that property.
Could you provide the map again so we can actually see?
Yeah, let's pull that up. Yeah, that'll be helpful. Just the PowerPoint, that first slide. So what it means is we tried to set the stage for any number of parcels to be used, but whether or not they get used or not is really between the Mateel and those property owners. Some are fundamental, like the Cooks Valley site has to be worked out, that's where the event occurs. Others are more auxiliary. So what I think you're hearing is some of the frustration from neighboring property owners who don't feel like they're being included and it's not staff's job to ensure that the Mateel uses their property, but to the extent that we can facilitate that, we certainly do. But beyond that, and then I think to speak to the access road condition or the, or the situation with the easement, and when we pull up the map, it'll be a little more clear. The, the, what was referred to by Mr. Parsons as an easement is actually right of way held by Caltrans as part of a bridge project that never materialized years and years ago. And, and, and so that it is right of way, it's not an easement. It's, it's actually held by the state of California as part of the highway right of way. It just doesn't have a highway through it.
Could you please, no, we had opportunity to hear from public, we heard, we're listening. Now we're hearing from staff.
I think if we pull up this one here, I'll show it a little better. There we go, let's see. Okay, so, maybe can I put my cursor over it? Yeah. So right here is the property that Mr. Parsons holds, that, that Mrs. George was occupies. This, just slightly between that property, if I can move the cursor here, this area right here is the area in question that I believe they're saying, is there easement that they need to give permission for? It isn't a parcel that they hold, it's not an easement that they control, it's right of way as part of the highway. And in that regard, it is not a, it's not a private easement matter. They have use of that. I mean, I want to be clear, they use that as their access and it's used as part of these festivals. But whether or not it requires their formal permission, I don't believe that to be the case, but I don't want to go beyond that. I just want to be clear about, it is not a private easement, it is highway right of way that's not currently developed with a highway and is part of the area where they take access to their property. And it is absolutely a secondary access that allows for access to the Cooks Valley site through a gate right in that area. So hopefully that helps. If, if there's additional things to cover, do you, do you want to speak to that?
Well, I want to ask a question. How was that treated in the original permit? Was, was the Caltrans right of way included as part of the permit?
The right of way wasn't. The parcel that they hold was held, it was in the permit.
So what do we require for the Caltrans parcel?
We, we acknowledged its, its potential for use. So it's not a parcel, it's really just.
I, I understand that, but I mean, there should have been an encroachment permit or some other legal document from Caltrans.
They have access, they have a, they have a permit through Caltrans each year that an event occurs, all these.
That, that's, we're, we're just taking a report on the event right now, okay? And trying to understand, so.
I used to own that property, the state took it away from me because they're going to.
Can we stop?
No, we can't, I can't do it this way, okay? When we bring up the next project, we'll have another public hearing. If you have something you want to say then, you'll have the opportunity to address the commission. I've actually closed the public hearing on this piece of the project. I asked if anybody else needed to speak. Nobody stood up to speak. I brought it back to the commission and it's now up here with us and the staff to determine whether or not we're going to accept this report. Then we'll go to the next project. Okay? Thank you for, for understanding. Commissioners, do we have any other questions, staff? Yes.
Maybe it might be useful to consider adding a section in the next annual report that talks about where ingress and egress occurred. And maybe that might just help provide additional information to the commission during the next review.
Yeah, and I, and I think there was also a question as related to emergency egress. Are there emergency access points? If so, where are they? Heard that question as well, and I don't know if that's addressed in the report. Commissioner West?
So I think I understand, but I just want to ask a question, just to clarify and make sure I'm understanding correctly. When you talk about Mr. Parsons' property, was it a part of the original permitting? It's considered, you could say, an auxiliary property where the event has the option to use it if they, so choose and agreed with the property owner and the county has permitted that essentially. But that doesn't, the permit does not require them to use that property in order to fulfill all of the, like, requirements of the permit? Thank you.
So when you do a report, this is after action report, can you not, as an appendix, attach written comments from property owners or people that have positive or negative comments that they want to make so that for the future, those impacts, they wouldn't feel like they were silenced or left out? And they could be considered in future permitting, ways that they could be mitigated?
Through the chair. I just want to be clear, we make sure to notify them every year. I'd never heard anything prior to tonight. This is the first that was coming to our attention.
If they're given that opportunity, you don't have to judge one way or the other, just attach them and, you know.
We've received no comments so far. So, and we would, we absolutely would, so you're.
So I'm saying this so that people in the audience hear that if they submit written comments, that they would be included for review.
Can I, I appreciate that suggestion, but I just want to sort of clarify it. There's the public notice of this hearing, which I would assume all neighbors get that notice. And of course, other members of the public are free to comment on that as well, they may not be neighbors. But perhaps what, I don't want to speak for Commissioner O'Neill, but perhaps what she's suggesting is directly reaching out to those, you know, you reaching out to those neighbors in the preparation of the monitoring report or in the preparation of the item to present it to the planning commission, that perhaps you could do that additional outreach to the neighbors and say, hey, we're, we're putting together this monitoring report, we've got what the Mateel's giving us, this is your opportunity to give us your input into how the event took place. If, if that's not happening, that seems like it could be a practical addition to the report.
I think that comments from even attendees could have, you know, influence on how things are planned in the subsequent years if there was an issue that, that arose. I mean, there was comments about alcohol and what have you, I don't know if there was a problem with that or not. But my issue was, I don't even know what the problem was. All I got was, why wasn't it included? I don't even still know what the problem is. And I'm not going to take comments either right now. I'm just saying in the future, if, and they should be in writing, if it's serious enough or if you want your, to be heard, put it in writing so there's no, I thought he understood and he's ignoring me, you know, you put your comments in writing, we all get to read them and, and evaluate, you know, if there's a problem or something needs to be addressed differently in the future. But if you don't get it in writing, then you, I don't think you have, you know, an obligation to go beyond that.
Mr. Mulder?
So just looking at this, the last two sentences, it says, during review, the commission may amend conditions or operational requirements to better address impacts or control public nuisance. Authorized attendance levels may be adjusted based on annual performance. So from what I got gathered is, as far as the, the performance of the, of the event, there was no big public safety, public nuisance. There may be a concerned neighbor. I heard two commissioners maybe ask that neighbors be notified and give opportunity for written comments as part of the post-review. But I, I think that's something we might add into a motion for future going forward to hear everyone's concerns, but I, I didn't hear any testimony or read any reports that there was a public nuisance type issue that would warrant us to want to shrink the event down.
I thought I heard there were some business-related impacts. I don't know what those impacts were. So if we knew, if we could learn a little bit more about the impacts, we could perhaps propose a way to mitigate, but I don't know what the impacts are at this time.
So I guess what I was trying to say is I think I would be willing to make a motion to receive the annual report and add that, whatever the commission, I heard two commissioners asked that neighboring property owners be notified and given opportunity to give written reports as well? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
So is that your second?
I'll second that and I appreciate, yeah, I'll second it, sure.
Would you consider amending your motion to also include the next report, address egress and ingress concerns as Commissioner Kurayazi requested and also include the water quality monitoring recommendations from staff?
Yes, that was, the water quality was part of my motion because I thought that was part of staff's report, so that's, and then the report will consider ingress and egress as well.
Thanks, I'll second that amended motion.
I have a motion to second. Any other questions, comments on the motion? Can I have a voice vote, please, or roll call vote, please? Excuse me.
Commissioner Scavdon?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurayazi?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, while we're on this topic, now we'll hear the Take Three Presents Conditional Use Permit. Staff report, please.
Thanks, Commissioner Steve Lazar, once again. I'm here to present this project. We have a PowerPoint, if we can get that pulled up. Okay. So I'm going to be pretty brief with this one. We're, we're dealing with the same parcel that we were just talking about, but not all of the parcels that were being referenced before. So you can see the parcel number that we have identified as the 07 parcel, that is the County Line Ranch, formerly the Demick Ranch. So looking a little closer at it here, so it's the area in yellow and that would be the area where the events would occur, similar to the Reggae on the River event that occurred last year. And looking again at the entitlements that we've, it's been granted to date, two events to the Mateel, two events to the Northern Knights group, both, or two, both permits allow for two events per permit. So a total of four at the present can be. So a total of four at present can be occur each year. That has yet to occur in any year in recent years. What we have tonight is a fifth event by a different operator, 501 T3. The event would be roughly 3,000 people in attendance and roughly 3,000 people camping. The point of the event is largely a campout. And then the number of vehicles is an estimate, and it's based on some of the vehicle miles traveled reduction measures that I'll get into in a minute. But approximately 1,300 vehicles. Which you can see is pretty, pretty less than what the site is capable of. So here you can see a site plan that shows areas of the, of the property, very similar to some of the site plans we saw at the last item. And you can see areas devoted to parking are shown in blue, roadways in red, and camping areas in green, and then areas, entertainment areas in yellow. The, you know, this event is a different type of event. It is, it is somewhat private in nature. It's not the kind of thing that everyone, anyone who wants to can go to. It's sort of an invite-only kind of thing, and it grows with, you know, word of mouth and through the organization itself. So it's, it's not the same type of event as, as what Northern Knights and Reggae are, but it does involve a lot of the same numbers of people, same types of activities, and certainly the same property. And then here you can see areas of traffic circulation. These are the main areas that are used as part of the event, not, not the area that we were just talking about. That's not a primary access point. So we have coordinated with a number of agencies, and we've incorporated some of their comments, in particular, CDFW was interested in making sure that there was sufficient water storage to serve the events. Environmental Health had questions about, originally they had kind of optimistic plan for solid waste disposal, sort of a pack-in, pack-out, but they wanted to see some contingency plan, just in case people don't take what they brought with them. Caltrans has provided favorable comments and is in support of the proposal. CAL FIRE didn't have any comments, but was engaged. And I spoke with State Parks and also contacted Mendocino County Planning. So I want to get into water storage briefly, just because it is a, a big deal when it comes to some of the environmental concerns that we addressed in the, the prior environmental documents, including the most recently adopted mitigated negative declaration. So we have a condition with this project we're recommending that be applied. It would require before the, before they operate an event, that they bring online at least 20,000, but maybe as much as 40,000 gallons of additional storage on the property. And looking at the water storage situation currently, this is sort of a zoom in on that. You can see that there's a bladder in red that's not used for potable water, that's used for dust control. It needs to be permitted. It was brought on the site without a permit, and they're currently in the process of working with an engineer to get that permitted. The green is existing storage. The large green circle is a 50,000 gallon tank, as well as four, 5,000 gallon tanks. That's been on the site for some time. And then in yellow is sort of where they scoped out the ability to develop additional storage. And I've kind of boxed in an area where the Matil has recently brought on roughly 12, 3,500 gallon tanks, and those are online. So in total, at this point, it's 112,000 gallons of storage at the site. And to put it in perspective, last year, Reggae used about 40,000 gallons. So what we used to kind of estimate that 20 to 40,000 number was sort of prorating it based on the number of people at Reggae, which was 5,000 people over four days, or three days, excuse me. And we would have, in this case, at peak, 3,000 people over four days. So we kind of did that, and, and we were told that there's some leaks in the system, and so that 40,000 number may not be a great, you know, it's certainly conservative, I think, is safe to say. So we're going to work that out, and we're going to monitor this year and see if we can get a more, a better target when it comes to water storage. But that is, to be clear, the water used by the event will be stored and not taken from the river during the event season. And, and the forbearance period applies. So that, right now, all those tanks are full, is what I'm told. VMT and GHG is, is a new issue under the checklist, the environmental checklist, and they are still getting kind of fleshed out by local agencies. So we had, it did challenge us, as you know, tonight, you'll be considering VMT thresholds for the county and making a recommendation to the board. So we don't have specific guidance for this type of scenario. Here we have an event that would bring roughly 3,000 people at peak to a site that would come with a, with a footprint of VMT and greenhouse gases. So to try to address that, we worked closely from the beginning with the applicant on some ways to basically look at dropping the number of people driving down, and also when it comes to GHG, getting creative about lowering GHG levels by different implementation measures. So for instance, you know, looking at some of the mitigations that, that worked out for VMT, one of them included, you know, this was initially one I never thought of before, but the, the, they, they bring a lot of art to the event to make these pop-up kind of exhibits. And if every artist brings their art independently, that creates a lot of vehicle trips. But if you offer, and most of the people that come to this event are from the Bay Area, 90% or more. So if you offer a centralized place to drop off your art, they bring it in one fell swoop, it lowers the number of vehicle trips. It also lowers the GHG. Other measures include carpooling incentives, you know, doing some shuttles, and, and also locally sourcing building materials. That's mostly for GHG, but also VMT. So what you can see here in this table is, if they just did the status quo and they took, this event currently operates in Lake County at a, at a site called Saratoga Springs. So it has roughly 1,400 people coming to the event at its current site, and it's at its capacity. If you were to take that event and just move it to the County Line Ranch, just by virtue of the fact that the majority of the attendees come from the Bay Area, that adds roughly 90 miles round trip of additional travel without even adding any people. So the site, based on the demographics, is going to increase VMT. If you extrapolate that for 3,000 people, you get roughly 583,000 miles of VMT that would come from each event. But what they've done through these mitigation measures and calculations that are included in the appendices is reduce it on a per capita or on a total basis by 13%, 13.3%. And we believe that's a meaningful reduction, and it, it's in, it's in the spirit of the VMT goals that are in the checklist. So this is a little bit unconventional, but it is, I think, well, well-founded and well-reasoned based on the analysis that was conducted. So, oops, let's go back. So for that reason, we believe the largest issues that were addressed have been addressed, that being the water storage and the footprint in terms of VMT and GHG. We, as I mentioned in the last hearing, have an environmental document that covers events at this site. This doesn't really depart from the types of activities that are allowed under that. It's well within the carrying capacity of the site. An addendum was prepared to the subsequent MND, which was the last environmental document that was adopted by the commission. We recommend you adopt the addendum. It has the, the evidence to support the conclusions we've reached in terms of the environmental impacts. And the mitigation measures effectively address the concerns, because they're not any unique concerns that arise as a result of this proposal. So for those reasons, we think the findings can be made, and are recommending that you approve a use permit to this group to allow them to operate a 3,000-person event. And it should be clear that they're not going to be operating at 3,000 right off the gate. You know, it's going to be something they work up to, but that was the, that was the ceiling they, they kind of envisioned. So with that, I'm going to end my presentation for now, and be prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions of staff before we go to public?
One, and it relates to what you said earlier, just to make sure I understand it. So when you draw up all the parcels that are going to be included in the permit, you put potential parcels so that, but it's up to the organizer to go back and, and work with each individual parcel that potentially could be a part of the event to determine whether there's mitigation issues or, you know, they don't want to be a part of it, and they say, stay off my property. Is that what you said earlier?
Through the chair, I wanted, yes, but I want to just refine one thing. We don't just add parcels without the permission of the property owner. So it's, it's essential, and it was, permission was granted at the time of the last permit's approval. And, but those property owners knew that it was ultimately their prerogative, whether they work out a lease agreement and could come to any kind of business arrangement with the Matil or Northern Knights for them. Same thing here. But we haven't included any other parcels, as I may note. It really is just going to be confined to the County Line Ranch. It's not expecting to use any other property.
Yes, Commissioner?
I have a question regarding the greenhouse gases and the MND addendum. And I was curious what the, because it comes to the conclusion that there is a mitigated, there's, there's less than significant impact with mitigation measures. But I was curious what, you've calculated what the greenhouse gas reductions are, but I don't know what the baseline is or what that percent reduction came out to. So I was curious how you came to that conclusion that there's less than significant for greenhouse gases.
The reduction breaks out by shuttles, the art transport, the carpooling incentives, and the locally sourced materials. And I, I think I'll let the applicant, because really, they were, they prepared the calculations, and I want to make sure that I don't mischaracterize them, and they're very conversant with it. So I think they can speak to the percentage-wise, but, but the largest percentage is from the carpooling incentives. That was 46% of the reduction that would occur. And then the other thing that's kind of a wild, but very reasonable conclusion is, because 90% of the attendees are coming from the Bay Area, without doing anything, there will be a reduction in GHG because the vehicle fleet is going to electrify. And that will come with a lower carbon footprint in terms of any event that has those, those people coming from those points of origin. But is that okay if I, if I let the applicant handle that? Okay, thanks.
Okay, we'll, we'll go to the applicant. Applicant, if the applicant's here in the room?
Do you want me to answer that one specifically, or do you want?
You have 10 minutes, and, and yes, you can-
And I have some slides. I don't know if it is easy to plug these in. I can skip them also if it's not? That's a dongle, if you need it.
I'm sorry?
There's no way to plug it in over here. I'll skip the slides, then. It's okay. Don't mind me. I just have this up here. Hi, I'm Misha Steiner. I am the Executive Director of 501 T3. And we're a theater and arts nonprofit that creates narrative-driven participatory containers for artistic styles and mediums, including immersive theater, stage theater, performance, environmental and installation art, and music. We are a little bit different than your average event of this size, especially your average campout of this size. This is a labor of love. None of us are making real money off of this. Full disclosure, I pay myself the minimum salary that is possible to be paid. This is not, this is a nonprofit and was a not-for-profit for long before it was a for-profit. We have a strong focus on theater, and immersive theater. And we prioritize creating a platform for new and emerging artists to get, to experiment with ideas and gain experience and build portfolios, so that they can take that and use it in endeavors beyond our events. We're giving a platform for artists who wouldn't usually get a platform with this size of an audience. And our model relies on distributed small-scale entertainment. We don't have a main stage. We don't book headliners. The event is primarily one to tens, or at maximum, one to a couple hundred people at a time, attend, entertainment, rather than like large stages where all couple thousand people are watching a single thing at once. We don't sell cannabis. We don't sell alcohol. We do allow attendees to bring their own alcohol, but it is not the focus of our event. And we take safety and security very seriously and commit extensive resources to them. Our events use a unique system of social accountability to enforce good behavior. We have a sponsorship model through which attendees must be invited. It is not so much that no one is invited to our events without knowing us. It's that someone has to vouch for you and your good behavior and take responsibility for that behavior. And there are consequences if you sponsor someone who is not of their best behavior. We have banned people for bad behavior before, and several people over the 11 years now since 2013 that we have been throwing these events. Tickets aren't available to the general public, but tickets are available through someone who can sponsor you. And as a result, we've had a track record of extremely well-behaved attendees. In 11 years of running this event, we have never had a single incident of onsite violence. We have not had one fight since 2013, and I am extremely proud of that. We, and we, we have a lot of reverence for County Line Ranch. We have been at our current venue for 10 years since 2014. Depends on whether you count the nonexistent years during COVID. But I grew up outside of Ukiah in Potter Valley, and I first attended Reggae on the River in 2006, and first attended Northern Knights in 2014. That property is near and dear to my heart, and we have wanted to move there for many, many years. And so this is a tremendous opportunity for us. We actually love our current venue, but we've just outgrown it. We're parking half of our, almost all of our attendees on a neighboring property at this point. And there's just no more room for people to put tents, and it's not a very pleasant experience to show up on Friday and have to search for a place to put your tent. And County Line Ranch affords us that space to spread out, to be able to say yes to the person who wants to bring their art project, but it's a 20-foot by 20-foot art project, and we don't have room to put it anywhere anymore. We look so forward to building a long-term relationship with both County Line Ranch and the Southern Humboldt community. I know what it's like in Southern Humboldt. I grew up not that far away. I get it. We, we're so excited to, you know, make, make site improvements with, of course, County Line Ranch and Humboldt County, because this is a place that we can actually invest. Our current venue is a place where there is no room to make any improvements, and they are not particularly interested in it. But we are so excited to build a more permanent home here. And we have an excellent track record of maintaining good relationships with our venues. We've been at our current one with this event since 2014. We have never been kicked out of a venue since 2013, although we have had two of them burned down because Northern California, not, not on our watch, mind you. And we prioritize environmental stewardship. We pride ourselves at leaving sites better than we found them, not just as good as we found them. We take measures, those measures to mitigate the vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gases are a thing that we want to do, because we are moving our event, by moving to County Line Ranch, we would be moving our event farther away from our core constituency. And that necessitates more miles, and so we do want to do something about that, because we care. And we've reviewed the staff report and the conditions of approval, and we are very comfortable with them, as written, and eager to work with the planning department and responsible agencies to meet those deliverables. We, we, we want to comply. We like regulation. That's how we get along. That's how we don't get in trouble accidentally. And finally, I'd just like to introduce two of the other people in Take Three who might also be able to answer some of your questions that I might not be able to answer. We have Jess Lucas, our Safety Director, and Jeff Ward, our Site Operations Director, both of whom are capable of speaking to some of the areas that I am not the expert in, should you have questions about those. And we're very happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and I very much hope that we are able to move to County Line Ranch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the room that would like to address the commission? Please do.
For public comment?
Yes. Oh, I was actually pointing to the lady behind you, but you can work it out. Okay, thank you. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name's Erica Cooper Rider. I'm a 27-year resident of Mendocino County, where I raised my two sons. I am the former Business Manager of Ukiah Players Theater, a former Executive Director of Mendocino Access Television, a former instructor at Space School of Performing Arts, and a founding owner of Ukiah Brand Company. Currently, I'm a business owner and a healthcare consultant, working with healthcare centers throughout California as my day job. My fun job is volunteering at events, and volunteering and working at events. I've been attending, volunteering, and working at the 501 T3 theater camp since the beginning in 2013. I've also volunteered and worked both at Reggae on the River and Northern Knights as a camera operator and various other positions, food and beverage service, decor, and that sort of thing. And I also work at several other events around California. The theater camp is by far my favorite event. The staff and crew are professional and experienced. The attendees are creative and conscientious, and just overall lovely people. And the, the event is very, as Misha said, the event is very leave-no-trace oriented. That's kind of a constant thing that you hear at the event. That's kind of a constant thing that you hear at the event, you know, pack it in, pack it out. And I think it will undoubtedly be a much lower impact on the land and the river than, than Reggae or Northern Knights. And County Line, I think, is the perfect spot for our theater camp, and I wholeheartedly support the approval of the permit, and hope you'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair. My name is Liza Welsh. I'm a resident of Eureka and also of rural Trinity County in Hyampom, and I'm here today to speak in favor of the Take 3 application. Some of you in this room know me. I work in environmental planning and event sustainability, and I even had the pleasure of serving here as a planner for Humboldt County for a few years alongside Director Ford and these planners assembled here. I've also known Misha Steiner for over a decade. I've volunteered with him and with Mr. Ward on various event productions over the years, including this one. Working and making art with this team is a highlight of my year. So when I heard that they were considering bringing the theater camp to Humboldt County and to County Line Ranch, I was thrilled. I volunteered to help prepare the application free of charge, because I was just so excited about the event and that it would be a great fit for Humboldt County. To me, this is a no-brainer. This is a small-scale event. This is a site that's already permitted as an event venue. It aligns with the county's goals to support arts, culture, and economic diversity, especially in our rural areas. We need more of that. Also, having worked closely with Misha and the team, I can speak to their professionalism, integrity, and deep respect for the land, and also for the community of Southern Humboldt and Northern Mendo. I have every confidence that this event will be thoughtfully managed, environmentally conscious, and beneficial to the surrounding areas. This is a team who will leave the site cleaner than we found it, and who will act as true partners to the county and the other responsible agencies. So for these reasons, I respectfully urge you to adopt the findings in the draft resolution before you, as written, and to vote in favor of approving this project. Thank you for your time and for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Chair, my name is Matt Stevenson. I am a, also a resident of Hyampom and Eureka, and I have also known Mr. Steiner for, I think, close to a decade now. I definitely met him before, I think, a lot of the, a lot of 501 T3 really picked up and got moving. And I'll say that I've volunteered and worked at his events, and it's always been an amazing experience. People leave things cleaner than they find them. I do a lot of production help there, and also at other events. I'm a software and electrical engineer outside of my fun life here, and I'll say that, like, everything's very safe, and the construction's done at a very high level of quality. I think that, I'm also a business owner, and I think that this event will help with the economy in Humboldt. It will bring more people up here. I think that it helps a whole lot. I, I actually, like, was hearing a bit of the VMT concerns and the EVs, and I, this is the first time I actually heard about it. I was, you know, Liza was doing a lot of the permitting work, but I wasn't paying attention. And actually, I've dealt with that logistical issue myself with Saratoga Springs, because I am an EV driver, and the infrastructure for EV charging is not anywhere near as, as built out at Saratoga Springs and in Lake County near Saratoga Springs, as it is actually near County Line Ranch. And EV infrastructure is much closer, and it's larger. And there's more developed options, so it's not just like, you know, the supercharger network or the CCS charging infrastructure, that all of the different charging infrastructures are available. So I think that actually will help a substantial amount with getting people to bring EVs to, to this event. It's actually a problem with a lot of the events of this nature, where people don't bring their electric vehicles, because they're kind of in rural areas, it's hard to get charging infrastructure there, but, but I think this is a perfect location. You just pop down the road about half a mile, and you can charge up 100%. So I would urge you to, to approve the permit. Yeah, this is great.
Thank you. I have one more in the room, I think, if there's anybody else. Okay, and then we'll go to the, so one more after this in the room, and then I have a couple online. Looks like with their hands up. Welcome back.
I'm Season George. I live there, at the end of the driveway, and I understand that this conditional use permit does not include the parcel I live on, but it does impact my business. As you can see on the map, the driveway there, even though he says it, that, he says it's a right-of-way, is an easement on our deed. I did confirm that with Caltrans at a state level. I have documentation of that. I don't know where Steve gets this from. I have written Steve many times via email, so that is comment and writing. I don't know, you know, it's terrifying for me to stand here and see all of you guys disregard my property and my business. You know, if I have no recourse, like you said earlier, once these are approved, there's no recourse for me. You know, I have to live there year-round. It's terrifying. Last year, I have documentation that my driveway was completely blocked. The emergency egress gate was wide open. People were driving in and out of it, on, people who are not paid for parking, this is probably why the parking, I have all this documented. I have filed an incident report that the material refuses to give me. I filed a police report. So for, for you guys to say that there's no record of public nuisance is also a falsification in my mind. I don't know where else I'm supposed to go. I don't believe that I'm public comment. I'm actually active in the permit, so why am I considered? Why do I have to come to a meeting and public comment? Like I'm, like I'm a neighbor? Well, no, I'm on the permit. I should have rights, I should have provisions for security, I should feel safe in my home when these events are happening. And your decisions today determine whether or not I'm safe. So I really want you to consider it very carefully. This is my home, and my business, and my only livelihood, and I run a tourism business through the summer, and these literally block my driveway to where my tourist driver won't come there, won't, because the people at the end of the driveway won't let him down it, or will let him down it, or he can't get down it. I mean, you could, I should have him give public comment about his experience of trying to do business with me during these times. It's terrifying for me to have to come here and listen to this and just be completely disregarded. Who do I turn to? Who, who sticks up for the business owners and the citizens of this county? Is it you to ensure public safety? Isn't that your jobs here? So I'm asking you, please, please protect my home, my safety, and do not omit my concerns from staff report. And I should not have to come here as a public person when I'm part of the permit. Why am I, why are we not represented at all? It's very concerning, and it should be alarming to all of you. It should be, you know, I don't understand why you're like, what's up with these people over here, and why, why is there no representation?
Thank you.
Hi, Adam Kleis, and I represent the property owners, and I just want to thank you for giving me a few minutes. First, I'd like to acknowledge that, you know, it's, it's upsetting to hear that my neighbor is upset, and something that is obviously, you know, not how you want it to be. What I can say is that, and people who've worked with me will, I'm sure, support this, I tell every one of them that during our events, you need to find a way to put money in the pockets of my neighbors. And we push them to do that, we pressure them to do that, and I can't control the outcome of those interactions and the discussions that take place, but I do my best. I do know that the business that I'm hearing about getting interfered with, you know, and I'm not going to say that what I'm hearing is wrong, but I think I disagree. What I've heard in the past is that those are the most, you know, most expensive weekends possible for her tourist business. So there are actually quite a bit of economic boost, in the sense that a rising tide lifts all boats. Any place that has private accommodations within any reasonable zone is making a lot of money when these events happen. Her place is actually walking distance, and in the past, she's included it as a special access thing and had shuttle access from the event. So the security and insurance things are real if her property's being included, and we want to make sure that they're taken care of. The security thing for me is real. I live there, have a residential zone that we try to protect. It can be scary to have thousands and thousands of people, you know, just a chain-link fence away from your bedroom. So I'll commit here, you know, to work with our neighbors to make sure they do feel safe during these events, and I know that this one in particular shouldn't bear the brunt of the concerns from the other types of events. It is a very different type of an event. I hope I'm not offending anybody when I say that theater geeks are a little bit different than the people I'm interacting with from the music industry. And the, the level of preparation that they're bringing, the concerns that they're trying to address proactively are refreshing. I couldn't be more proud to bring an event like this to Humboldt County and stand before you and say, you know, we've heard the call, what this county has asked for is increased tourist visits. We're trying to do that. We have to do it sustainably, we have to do it carefully, and it's difficult. The reality is, we have two permits that aren't getting used every year because of just kind of the business realities of the festival world. And so even though this would be a new permit, it wouldn't actually result in more activity happening than we technically already have permission for. And I'd just like to say that we don't take it for granted that we have an event that is sold out and matched out their parcel just down the road, and they want to move it here, and every week, festivals around the world are going out of business. So we've had three now, this will be the third, that potentially could be at capacity for our site, that we are just incredibly lucky to have that. We don't want to mess it up. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a couple callers online, 8228. 8228, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioners, and thank you so much for your time. My name is Sophie Meyer, and I've been making art for 501 T3 Theater Camp since 2018.
Could you speak up, could you, could you speak up a little louder, please?
I can try. Are you able to hear me now?
That's better, yes.
Okay, I'll try to project my fast-reading speech. Thank you for your time. My name is Sophie Meyer, and I've been making art for 501 T3 Theater Camp since 2018. Since then, I've led or contributed to about eight installations for 5T3, each of which has provided me with a meaningful opportunity to grow as an artist. 5T3 creates a unique, fertile environment for creative development, offering not just logistical and material support, but also bringing together a truly engaged, curious audience that makes the work feel deeply worthwhile, as I think you've heard from some of the previous speakers. One of the things that I really appreciate about 5T3 is how much it invests in artists, not just in terms of materials or build space, but entrusting us to take creative risks. It's really rare to find a community that values the artistic process this much, and that's a big part of why I keep coming back. I do lead teams building art installations for many other similar events, and I can say without hesitation that the level of support that 5T3 provides to artists is entirely unparalleled. They're more consistent, more organized, more collaborative, and more thoughtful than nearly any group I've worked with. I'm excited about the opportunity to create something new at County Line Ranch, and I respectfully ask that you approve the conditional use permit, so we can continue creating art in environments that foster this so well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And Richard, I think you have your hand up. You're unmuted.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, faintly. Can you speak up, please?
Hi there. My name is Richard Gottlieb. I own RGX Medical. We provide medical and first aid services for 501 T3 for, we've been doing for about 10 years now. We do about 30 events a year, ranging from 500 to 30,000 people. I just wanted to speak briefly to my experience with this event. It's extremely well-produced and well-organized responsibilities. The attendees are responsible. We have an incredibly low number of basic first aid or medical instances of the event, and I think that it would be a benefit to the county, and I hope that y'all can see the improvement at County Line Ranch.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask the applicant if there's anything else you'd like to add to your statement after hearing public comment, or you don't have to. Okay, we're good? Okay. Thank you. Bringing back to the Commission and staff. Yes, through the chair.
I guess, going back to the neighbor who is expressing concern around access, access on their property is what it sounds like. It sounds like it's a, they're arguing that it is an easement on their deed. I think you're arguing that that easement is held by Caltrans. All right, can you maybe, maybe can we rehash it one more time?
Yeah, let me try. Through the chair. So they had an access that when Caltrans acquired that land was, would have been lost, but an easement was likely reserved for them because they used that as their access to the site. So it's true what they say about holding an easement, but that easement isn't an easement that they control exclusively, it's something that Caltrans has granted as part of the acquisition. I think that's where the kind of confusion is coming from.
Yes, Commissioner West?
So just to, I think, help further clarify Commissioner Kuriosi's question. You're saying that Caltrans is the, or it's, it's state highway, that, that parcel is that, the state owns that property, and the easement is granted to the neighbors, including the neighbor who's expressing concerns and this event site, correct?
I don't, I want to be clear that the easement's held by the folks we heard testimony from. The parcel that they occupy and own. And because it is their primary access to their property, it was necessary, most likely, when, when Caltrans acquired that. But the County Line Ranch has a totally different access that's their main access to the site. And, and it abuts this right-of-way that's held by the state, and it's a secondary access for emergency through there, identified in the plan of operation and emergency plan as well.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes. Commissioner Muldoon.
And then, to piggyback on that, Caltrans to each event grants an encroachment permit for ingress egress. Is that correct?
They grant a, a, a traffic control permit. It's something different from an encroachment permit, because they're not doing physical improvements, but it's some type of, it's, it's on the spectrum.
It's, they acknowledge that traffic will be impacted.
Please, please don't speak at the same time. Please, can I ask you to not speak over the Commission or staff? Please.
Actually, not supposed to have any speaking from the audience, to be clear. Thank you, Chair. So ingress egress will be impacted, and they grant some type of permit or notification that allows the access into and out of the site. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, I don't care who owns the easement. Regardless, it's a shared, it's a shared driveway or access that provides access to these people's home, or to their business?
The highway right-of-way has an easement that is their access point.
That's their access.
Correct.
Okay, so if that access is blocked during an event, that seems to me to be a problem associated with the event. Is that?
Agreed, yeah, absolutely. And I've inspected events and not observed that, but that doesn't mean I saw every iteration of it.
Right, so if the access is being blocked, that's a problem, and if the, if the resident doesn't feel like they could get out of their home during an emergency, or people can't access their business because of the events going on, I suppose their recourse would be to call Highway Patrol, call, call somebody that's responsible for maintaining that access, or how?
I mean, it really shouldn't be blocked, because it's a fire access as well.
Correct.
So it, it really, regardless of the inconvenience to the neighbor, it's not, it can't be blocked. It needs to remain open. So it's a violation of the permit to block that access in any fashion.
So we're hearing, I think, very clearly from the resident that it's been blocked. So if that's a violation of the permit, what's their recourse? What can we do to help support them in making sure that doesn't occur?
I think that we, we, we can be more clear to all event operators that those types of things are significant issues that need to be not reoccurring, and, and making sure that that's judged during the next go-around, that, that we don't hear this type of feedback about emergency. And, and making sure that that's judged during the next go-around, that, that we don't hear this type of feedback about emergency access or anyone's easement being blocked during the event. I think that's a fair thing to put on notice to all.
I, I think unfortunately, we didn't fully understand the concern when we were dealing with the Matiel's report, which we accepted. So can we just make sure that they understand that, you know, there has been a complaint regarding access to this property during the event? There's also been expressed a safety concern, which I understand. So perhaps we can have the safety patrols make sure they're patrolling that area adjacent to this properties. And people aren't camping up against the fence or whatever we can do to help this, this situation.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and to be clear, this is the first that's come to our attention. We weren't aware of it going into the hearing until we heard it with you.
Yeah, I think the applicant doesn't agree necessarily with that, but that's okay. Okay?
And, and absolutely, they received notice. And I had, I think it's clear to say, I'd have spoken with the property owner, but months and months and months ago, and it wasn't about this issue, you know?
Okay.
So it was new to me.
Okay.
There could also be temporary signage put up, you know, that, and more patrolling of that area because of the incident of complaint.
And there, it's right at the beginning of the entrance to the property. There's always staff there controlling access into the main part of the site. So it's really just a matter of working out those fine details and making sure they're, they're done correctly.
And, you know, maybe photographs if you have evidence that they can turn in, if, if it's a continuing problem that's not being addressed. Because it goes back on the, you know, the permit holder to ensure that the road's not blocked. So if they can, you know, I, I don't, I don't like the implication that we don't care because we do care. I didn't understand during the first testimony what the real issue was. I do now. And so I think it should be in the permit that they're responsible for keeping those roads open and monitoring them. Proper signage, whatever it takes to get the message to the attendees.
It's also not yet clear exactly what the applicant's business is, but again, it would be great if we could encourage participation between the event organizers and local businesses to support one another and try to help develop those relationships. Commissioner West?
Along the same thread, I do, I think, even though we didn't quite understand at the time, and I don't think that we can technically take action on something that's already closed. But I just wanted to acknowledge really briefly that we did ask for more clarification on ingress egress and then ask them to reach out to property owners. So hopefully, when we consider this again in a year, concerned neighbors understand the process a little bit better, understand that they can submit evidence, and that dialogue is open going forward. In regards to the permit in front of us, I'm really heartened to see so much testimony about how well-run an operation this is and that it is on the smaller side and feel comfortable with how things have been proposed and appreciate all of the people who've taken the time to speak and the due diligence of staff.
Commissioner Kuriozzi?
I, I would like to just briefly address the greenhouse gas side of things. So I, I very much appreciate the effort that the applicant put into the calculating the greenhouse gases and going, starting to address that VMT, vehicle miles traveled. These are important topics, in my opinion. I absolutely am not interested in holding up this project with relation to these comments. But I do, I would consider the argument regarding electric vehicles as the baseline rather than an improvement above the baseline. And, and also, I completely agree that the infrastructure at the site is, for charging electric vehicles, is, given how remote it is, is very impressive. Yet I think their target projections for electric vehicles, my sort of back of the envelope is you would need about two to two and a half days of continuous back-to-back use to actually charge all of those vehicles somewhere in that vicinity. And I just want to encourage staff, I know these topics can be pretty wonky and they're challenging. But I encourage staff to really try to put effort into these greenhouse gas, the greenhouse gas topic because it does relate to, to climate change, which is important. But that's it.
Yes.
Not to be tit-for-tat, but in California, we can still put diesel and gasoline in vehicles, correct? So why would we use electric vehicles as our baseline when people are still allowed to drive vehicles that get six miles to the gallon?
So their, their argument for the greenhouse gas reductions is that people will do that anyway. So there, the Bay Area is, does have a higher adoption rate. So they're arguing that their clientele will already be coming there. So their, their clientele are responding to state regulations and state efforts to accelerate the adoption of electric vehicles. And the data that they use to make that argument, in my opinion, is a baseline argument.
I would disagree because they, their constituents could still drive a hot rod car up six miles to the gallon.
Okay. I will also say that I did hear, and I, I like the idea of coordinated shipping of, of the art projects and perhaps, again, consideration of some sort of charter bus service that might be able to bring the attendees from some gathering point in the Bay Area, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in as well, thanking the applicants and for the presentation you made. Thank you for bringing this event to our community. It sounds very well thought through, including some of the efforts you're making to reduce vehicle miles traveled and other innovations that I think could be shared and, you know, with the other events that happen there. So I, I really do appreciate that Matiel, Northern Knights, the landowners of both parcels and these various events are all, I think, starting to work together on that, which, which is very heartening. So, and I appreciate what the landowner said about being concerned to hear that there's a neighbor so unhappy. I, I just didn't want any of that to get, to seem that it was missed. We spent a while talking about that issue, so I don't need to say anymore about that. But this sounds like an excellent project to me. I'm excited to vote in favor.
Is that a motion?
Sure. I will move that we find that we have considered the, the previous environmental documents prepared during past permitting, particularly the subsequent mitigated negative deck adopted by the planning commission on May 18, 2023. And I find that we have considered the draft addendum prepared for this project. And we adopt the addendum to the 2023 subsequent mitigated negative declaration and find that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance. And we therefore approve the conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval. I don't think we've had any new conditions discussed, so that's my motion.
I'll second that, but just highlight in the conditions of approval that the fire access route will, shall never be blocked.
Sure, would not hurt to underscore that in the, in the approval, in the conditions for this permit. I think they've heard this loud and clear, so, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? I think we take a voice vote on this one. All those in favor, if I buy, I. Any opposed? All right. Sounds like going to be a great event for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Director Ford, I totally failed in managing the time. So what would?
So this is your discretion. We can probably present the VMP tonight. I, I don't know that we'll be able to get into a lot of discussion.
Right. Okay. I need a five-minute break, so if you want to pull up the presentation, we'll come back. Can we be back at 10 to nine?
Yeah.
Okay. We have one item left on the agenda, which is the vehicle miles traveled policy resolution for sequoquethreshold screening criteria. It's as complicated as it sounds. It's, and it's probably going to take us a bit of time to get through. So I think we're just debating whether or not we should try to tackle this this evening or continue it to another meeting.
Yeah, realistically, our presentation, because of some of the public comments we've gotten, will be at least a half an hour.
Yeah, so we're not going to get through it. It might be better for us to take it all in one meeting versus breaking into pieces.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will just say that this is, this is an extraordinarily complicated topic. I, I feel like I'm struggling to get my head around it. And I benefited greatly from Commissioner Kuriozzi's comments, questions. So I, I want us to have a time to air those out in conjunction with staff. So the, I mean, I, I think I would agree that it would be better to do this all together in one meeting. But that's for you and the director to figure out.
Well, I, I would submit it's for the commission to come to a consensus on what you want to do.
If we continue it, we could bring back the first meeting in May. And I know we're starting to get into vacation season, so I'd like to. We have, but I'm thinking about un-cancelling. So that's the question. If we moved it to May 1st, we have one Commissioner absent right now, but what's, what's your sense on that?
Oh, I, I actually didn't realize we'd canceled May 1st. That, anyway, so, because it's still on here, but we have nothing else on that agenda. Is that?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So this could, I, I'm fine with doing that. I, I've missed the last two meetings, so, but I, I can certainly be here for that.
Commissioner West?
Personally, I'm available for the May 1st meeting. I think my only consideration would be that we've had some folks I saw online that I think wanted to comment and have been hanging in with this all night. And just in consideration of maybe that they can't make it May 1st, if we can open the public comment for folks who can't comment at that meeting like we've done in the past. If, if they are able to make it, maybe they can save their comments and it can be a more constructive dialogue then. But just in the acknowledgement that some folks have been planning for tonight and may not be planning for the 1st.
Well, we can, we can make a motion for a continuance and then we can take comment on that motion.
That would be wonderful.
I would, I would say I'm, I'm available May 1st and I would make a motion to continue this item to May 1st. So that way, if someone seconds it, we could get public comment on the continuance and only the continuance.
Okay, we have a motion and seconds to continue the vehicle miles traveled. Agenda item to May 1st. I'll ask the Commissioner first. Commissioners, any discussion or concerns about that? I'll ask the public in the room. Okay. And I see one hand up online. Mr. Fisk, can we, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Colin Fisk with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I do appreciate you taking comment at this time because I will be unavailable on May 1st. I think, hopefully you all have received our written comments, but I just, just want to briefly summarize that, you know, we do support the 50% below existing threshold. That's, you know, directly following state guidance and that makes sense and is supportable. But what we have trouble with is the establishment of the baseline by which that's calculated. And as you saw in the comments, the, using all of the unincorporated county and just averaging all of that out, we think is not appropriate and results in, you know, and sort of frankly absurd result where you're saying that, you know, if you built an office project in Petrolia or a housing project in Dinsmore, you know, that these would be low VMT, that people would be driving significantly less than average in those areas. And I don't think anyone can really conclude that with a straight face. So we do think there's an easy fix, which is just to, you know, divide the county into zones by sort of development patterns and average within those zones and use those as the baseline for projects within those areas. And, you know, include the incorporated cities in those averages, given that, for example, a project in Myrtle Town is, you know, the relevant baseline includes folks who live and work in Eureka more than it includes, you know, folks in Southern Humboldt, for example. So I would be happy if any Commissioners would like to discuss this in the interim between now and the next meeting, please reach out. Otherwise, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment and for adding the emphasis in your explanation. Appreciate that. So I have a motion and second. Go.
Clarifying, being as we took public comment, that person has now relinquished their right to speak in May 1st, even if they become available. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, and we also have their comment in writing.
We have their comment in writing. We've actually got a, we've responded point by point to every single comment we've got. That's part of the presentation. That'll take longer than our presentation, frankly.
Okay. All right, thank you. With that clarification, motions on the table with a second. Just a voice vote. All those in favor continuing this to our May 1st, to now having a May 1st meeting and continuing this item to that meeting. Say so by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, here you go. Thank you. Then Director, do we have a Director's report this evening?
I, I really don't have anything that is, well, I'll, I'll bring up the two major things that are moving towards the commission right now. One is the Regional Climate Action Plan. We finished now the EIR comment period on that. We did not receive that many comments. So we're targeting getting that in front of you in early June. The McKinley Bell Town Center, the, that's now out for public review. That comment period will last until May 27th. And so that we're targeting that probably early July, or mid-July, because July 4th always gets in the way.
Thank you. Will you please also make note to reach out to Commissioner McFarland to let her know that we're now meeting on May 1st? She'll actually probably be pleased that we're taking up this item if she can be here. And then Commissioners, is there anything that you want to bring to our attention or discuss this evening?
Just one. So through the chair to staff, more the Director. I noticed, following the Board of Supervisors, that for work-related purposes, there was a supervisor that was able to attend via Zoom. And I was curious with myself, as I'm busy in the summertime, what those parameters are for Commissioners to be able to participate via Zoom for work-related purposes.
So the, within both, I think, the commission's and the board's guidelines, there are provisions under which you can attend by Zoom. And I can provide those to you.
If I.
Just, I don't want to say anything off the top of my head and have it.
If I get, I'm just trying to get, re, relook at those. I can't find them, so that way I can double-check. Yeah, I just, if there's the ability for me to attend via Zoom after a 16-hour day or something like that, it'd be great.
So I, I don't want to, you should wait for the Director to send them, but I, unless they've. So, I, I don't want to, you should wait for the Director to send them, but I, unless they've changed from what they were, I remember when those laws came out, and they were state guidelines. And the thing is, as I recall, that they make provisions for attending remotely due to health, including family, medical purposes. But for work-related travel, that privilege seems to only apply to members of local or state agencies, local, state, or federal agencies. In other words, it didn't apply to me.
So, only, so private work doesn't count, but governmental work counts? That sounds very.
For the purposes of this virtual communication, I mean, I don't really understand it, and I don't really support it.
That sounds like extreme equality.
But that seemed to be the rule as I read it. Yeah.
I, I believe that is correct, so.
Well, if I get contagious, a contagious cold, I could continue via Zoom.
And I mean, of course, now we're, we're talking about the VMT issue and like, well, you know, that, that we could save a fair number of vehicle miles if we did, anyway.
Okay. I always wanted to do this. Meeting adjourned.
Okay.